Okay, we'll call the meeting over. Start the meeting with prayer and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today to seek peace for the city that we love. We hope that you give us strength to make the right decisions at the right time. We hope that you guide the governing body and city staff to lead this city to do great and wonderful things. In your name we pray, amen. Okay, before we go on to approval of the agenda, I would like to make a statement in regards to this last weekend's news article. I believe it's important for me to recognize that even though, you know, it's hard to tame the political animal, the political beast sometimes, public perception is important to me. And I believe that the people of Goddard need to know where my heart is and that I have the best interest of them in mind. And I want to be able to rest assure them. And so as of right now, just temporarily, I plan on stepping down as mayor and handing it over to Larry Zimmerman, our Vice Mayor. And this also gives me a good opportunity to focus on statehouse race that I believe I have a new opponent in the audience with me. And I'm looking forward to the great things that Goddard has in store in the future. So thank you and God bless you. Larry, it's all yours, all right? All right, before we move on to citizens' comments, I would like to just add one thing here. That this city has always been an open book and we've always made it our priorities to be as transparent as possible. To where anybody that had any questions about any of our dealings, they would have no problem finding an answer, whether it be on our website or by talking to our staff or by talking to us. Now, having said that, I don't believe there is anybody on this council that deserves to get dogged by anybody here. We all are on this council to serve you and we don't deserve to be trashed on when we're trying to do that as best possible to help this city grow in a manner that benefits everybody in it. Now, anyone and everyone that's in here has an opportunity to come up to the podium for three minutes and state their concerns about this city. But the minute it turns ugly, I'm going to ask you to take your seat and if you don't want to take your seat, I'll have you escorted too. Because I don't intend on this turning ugly just because our mayor has resigned. So you may come forward and have three minutes. But state your name, address, and your concern.
Step down and hand it to me.
Oh, I guess we need to see the approval of the agenda, right?
So, well, I have a question now that Hunter's left. But did he say that he resigns as mayor? Or he resigns temporarily to hand it to the Vice Mayor?
No, he resigned as mayor.
He did resign?
Yeah.
Look, if he resigned because it's a public position, you would have to make a motion and vote to accept that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept his resignation as mayor?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept his resignation as mayor.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I guess we'll get the approval of the agenda first.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to add that last item onto the agenda first?
Uh, executive session, I think.
No, 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 the accepting is resignation. Okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, now we'll move on to citizens' comments.
How are you guys doing? Hello, my name is Jamie Louisville and I reside at 2226 East Ridge Court, Goddard, Kansas, in the good old 67052. I'm very excited to express some awaited news that I'm happy to share with the council and the citizens of Goddard. After months of thoughtful consideration with my wife Liz and my family and hours of planning, we have received approval just today from MABCD to move forward with Mr. B.'s Daylight Donuts. We're currently in the remodel phase and hoping by midsummer, our hours will be Monday through Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And maybe try Friday Lights, opening at 8:00 p.m., of course, on Friday night. We are located right here on Main Street at 2222, or 222 North Main, just down the road. We'll be featuring assorted fried donuts and community-based coffee. And we will also have sausage rolls and biscuits and gravy. Please feel free to stop by and peek in on the construction. We just got the demo done and we'll be doing construction in the next couple of weeks. And we look forward to serving you guys up some donuts soon. So thanks a lot. And I emailed Micah today that we're moving forward and we're really excited about the process of it. So hope to have a community donut shop here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? All right, if that's the case, we'll close citizens' comments. All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting?
Appointment.
We have an appointment.
Oh, that's right. Connie Burke to the library board.
Oh, Lord. Mayor and governing body, so we have a Goddard Public Library appointment that April brought to me a while back. It's for Connie Burke. She has lived in Wichita for 29 years and in the Goddard School District for 27. Both of her children graduated from Goddard High School. During their school year, she was active in PTO and a room mother at Oak Street at Discovery. She was a board member of the Goddard Instrumental Music Boosters. She was also active in the Girl and Boy Scouts and on the Boy Scout Troop Committee for Troop 776. She has her undergraduate degree from the University of Kansas and a master's of library science from the University of Missouri. She's worked in a variety of libraries over the years and in the mid-'90s while working at the Friends University, she was on the Wichita Area Library Association Board. She currently works at the Wichita Public Library, Advanced Learn Library. This is right here.
Yeah.
You have anything else to add, April?
No, she's, she's a good person to have around. She's got lots of ideas and is enthusiastic, so.
What's that?
All right, do we have a motion to approve her?
I'll make a motion to approve Connie Burke to the library board.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Looks like she'll be good at this. Okay, now am I jumping ahead of myself?
No, we're on consent.
All right, approval of the minutes for a regular meeting, May 2nd, 2020? Or can we do them all at once?
Yeah, it's just adoption and consent.
Okay, we'll do them all at once. The special meeting as well as the, on the 2nd as well as the special meeting on May 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item G, which there isn't any unfinished business, is there?
No.
New business?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item H1. This is a public meeting for the dispute of code violation of 411 North Craig Street. So I wasn't aware, and I wasn't going to accuse myself, so, Mayor Zimmerman, if you would, you should open the public meeting at this time to consideration for the 411 dispute of code violation.
Okay, we will open the meeting.
Very good. On March 15th, 2022, the city code enforcement officer documented violation of City of Goddard Code, Section 8-308, upon the premises located at 411 North Craig Street. Certified letter was sent allowing 15 days for property to remediate the issue. Property owners are Scott Tiffany, who are juror, might be pronouncing that last name wrong, who live in Collet, Kansas. Kansas, the tenant is Larry Veltman, who is disputing the code violation. Mr. Veltman is not disputing that it is a code violation. However, he is disputing that he should be required to clean up the code violation because it's connected to his business dealings and the property is screened from view by the privacy claims. This is since changed. He called me on Friday to actually say that he would rather be considered an extension for cleaning up the property. So he has changed his position on the matter. Mr. Veltman is here and he'll be allowed to speak his piece on the matter. And Mr. Veltman has formed his right to legal counsel of anxiety and he provided notice within the 15-day timeframe allowed to be considered before the governing body per City Code 8-312, City of Goddard Code, officer found the following non-conclines of City of Goddard Code, Chapter 8, Article 3, Enviable Code. And I quote, "It shall be lawful for any person allowed to exist on any residential, commercial, industrial premises, condition which are injurious to health, safety, or general welfare of residents of the community or conditions which are detrimental to adjoining property and neighborhood of the city for the purpose of fair and efficient enforcement of instructions and lawful conditions that be classified as follows. A, exterior conditions of yard shall include, but not limited to, scattered over the parking lane, this disposition or accumulation of the yard of any of the following. A1 being lumber, wire, metal, tires, concrete, masonry products, plastic products, supplies, equipment, machinery, auto parts, junker refuse." These are the pictures that was taken by the code enforcement officer at the time described. As you can see, it falls under A-1. Number one, the governing body finds that this is the resolution as outlined. I'll run through it quickly, but it is an attachment of the agenda, item H1. Governing body finds the property located as the legal description provided, known and referred to as 411 North Craig, violation of Chapter 8, Article 301.81, Enviable Code. Property owner must remove any and all metal, metal parts, plastic, plastic parts, wood, wooden parts, machine parts, scrap metal located in the backyard. Owner shall clean up all previous stated materials such that noticeable metal, metal parts, plastic, plastic parts, wood, wooden parts, machine parts, scrap metals located in the backyard. Owner, substructures hereby directed commence to clean up the property within nine marks, 14 days. This is at the discretion of the governing body. You can set any time you wish. From the date of publication of this resolution, not later than the second day of June 2022, and have the cleanup completed within 30 days of the date of commencement, not later than the second day of July 2022. Provided that due application by the owner and for good cause shown by the governing body and such discretion may grant the owner additional time to complete the cleanup of the property. That's completely at the discretion of the governing body. If the owner fails to commence to clean up the property within time stated herein or any additional time granted by the governing body or fails to do it, prosecute the same until work is completed. The governing body shall cause the property to be cleaned and a violation of date and the cost of data shall be collected and made up provided by Chapter 8, Article 3-11. Case 12-1115. And then, stare two, or shall be assessed as special offense against law or parcel, land or vote filed right by law. All this is kind of a reflection that's in the agenda item. There is a small publication cost for the resolution. It is legally approved as to form. It is recommended that City Council approve what resolution term the property located at 411 North Craig is in violation of Chapter 8, Article 3, Enviable Code 1.0A, unless remedied to code violation on the property as outlined in Resolution 7.1B. As mentioned, Larry Veltman is here. If you would, if you'd come speak, address the governing body.
So originally, I was going to contest this, but I, it got out of hand over winter. I do heating and air and got a handover going. And when those pictures were taken, was actually in the process of getting rid of it, even though it may not look like it, it was scattered. But we were getting rid of it. We've continued to get rid of it. At this point, 90% of what you see there is gone. The rest of it will be gone within a week to 10, two weeks, in that range. A month at the worst. I'm busy. I do heating and air, so my days are 12, 13-hour days. But I am working on getting rid of it. We pulled another load off last weekend and another load today. It'll all be gone, you know, within the month. And I would say more than likely within a few weeks. The other reason that I do keep it is the copper, I recycle, so the copper prices go up and down. I have a tendency to hang on to it a little longer than I should. And it did get out of hand over the winter, I acknowledge that. But it is behind a six-foot privacy fence. Nobody can see it from the road. Nobody can see it from, unless you walk over behind a shed and peek over the fence and take pictures, which obviously my neighbor decided to do. It's not visible. I'm not saying that makes it okay. I'm just saying that it's not, it's not, uh, as egregious, I guess, as what it sounds. And it was, it did get scattered as I was, you know, scrapping it out. It has, I've got pictures now, if you'd like to see them, of what it is now to show that there has been, been improvement and we're getting there. I guess really all I'm after is a little more time to finish getting it out of there and that's it, that's all.
What's the council's wishes? Do we wish to give him an extra time to finish his cleanup? What, what, what time, Leonard, has he got?
Is that your discretion? So the resolution was drafted allowing 30 days after it's been published this Thursday. And it also gives a certain amount of time that he has to start cleaning it up. But you can change that if you wish. You can extend it as long as you want. You can require him to start sooner directly after publication since he's already started.
Is that a neighbor behind you?
He's actually to the corner, he's cat at the corner to me. He walked behind his shed into the corner of his yard and it's about a two-foot space to take those pictures. There was not, it's not a free public or free traffic area.
What's behind you?
These pictures, sorry, real quick, these pictures are the ones I took, actually. This was, these are my pictures. I took these.
Okay, well, you walked between.
That's right.
The shed.
Yes.
You did.
I mean, if I were living in those apartments, I'd be.
I can't, I'm sorry.
If, if I were living in those apartments, because I can see all those windows that can definitely see all that, I, I wouldn't enjoy looking at it.
Nobody has said a word. I mean, nobody said a word all winter. I understand that it is scattered there because we scrapped them and just haven't got them a lot there. But I can show you what it looks like now, if you like to see it. I mean, I'm not saying it's, it's not, I'm saying that it's going away.
Okay. What, what's the, I guess, what's the consequence with the code violations?
So code violation, if someone doesn't abate the code violation, the city steps in and we hire a contractor to abate the code violation and we would bill Mr. Veltman. If he fails to pay the bill within 30 days, then we assess it for his property taxes. It's very similar to mowing violation or any other code violation. If the governing body decides that they want to sign the resolution giving him 30 days to clean, remediate the backyard, that resolution also includes, as described, what would happen if he didn't, if he failed to do it. And basically, it would be us remediating the property, paying a contractor, sending Mr. Veltman the bill, and then if he fails to pay the bill in 30 days, it gets assessed for the property taxes.
The other option. I have the pictures of what it is right now, if you'd like to see them. It's not that. It's not even close to that. I mean, I don't know if you want to see them or not, but.
The other option you have, I mean, given that Mr. Veltman is here, he's not contesting the violation, it sounds like he's working on it, making progress towards it. You could always table this, you know, and take it up 30 days from now and, and have direct Micah to take a look before that meeting to determine whether there is still an issue to be decided. And if there is, then you would, you would be able to take into consideration the resolution. And then Mr. Veltman would still have the additional time provided by the resolution. But that's one other option, to not make any finding today, table it, and take it up in 30 days. It's up to you guys, what you want to do.
What's the council's wishes?
What do you think, Brad?
I'm cool with tableing it for 30 days.
All right. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to table, um, item H1 for 30 days until our corresponding meeting.
Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Do you have any follow-up questions?
What?
Do you have any questions?
I couldn't hear what they said.
They give you 30 days.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
There you go.
All right. Thank you.
Do I, I'm sorry, do I need to come back in 30 days?
Thank you.
Thanks, Micah. Oh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hearing closed.
Honorable Mayor and Council, item H2 is a polymer mixer purchased for the wastewater treatment facility. Polymer is a quagmire with a wide variety of uses in drinking water, water, and storm water. They are currently used in wastewater treatment to initiate the flocculation of solid waste that can be separated from water in a relatively easy manner. The city's wastewater treatment plant uses polymers in the sludge drying process to help congeal small pieces of lathosol and the larger ones. Polymers are utilized by creating a precise uniform solution in a liquid polymer blending system or mixer. The mixer currently in use at the plant Poor sludge quality is, after sludge goes into the truck, normally it should come out and be like a handful of moist dirt. Lately, our sludge hauler has been reporting back when he dumps, it is coming out of his truck like liquid, which is not what we're licensed and not what he's licensed to put on field. So if, if we don't fix this, it could cause an issue with our sludge point contract as well. The malfunctioning mixer will be replaced with a new Atris and Model five eighty liquid polymer blending system. This polymer preparation models are designed with an extremely efficient two-stage system, produces precise, uniform and thoroughly activated solution, resulting in the production of thick, dry sludge cake suitable for land application, which is what we do. Public Works is requesting a spending approval of ninety-seven hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of the new polymer blending system. The amount is currently budgeted in our operating budget and will be allocated a hundred percent to that operating fund thirty eight six seventy-two twenty, which is wastewater equipment parts. Fund balance in there is approximately forty thousand dollars.
That's the balance for the budget line item, that fund balance is not forty thousand dollars.
Budget line item, that's correct, not fund balance. I was a misworded there, so thank you, Matt.
Matt was gonna say.
We'd be in the budget, but five was down to forty thousand, so yes. That lineup, seventy-two twenties at forty thousand, so. So, any questions?
I know a lot of times there's conflicts in equipment. There's no problem with us working with what we have.
No, no, this is very similar to what we already have, and we are not purchasing a new, a new polymer pump, which is a separate item, which is about another ten thousand. We purchased one of those a few years ago. It's working perfectly. This is literally a system of valves and whatnot that puts a precise measurement of water and the polymer together, and then it pushes it into our belt press. So this is not different than anything else, it's just a new piece. And if you'll see back here on the, on this page here, this is a, a picture of what it is, and this one's showing it on the shelf, ours will be on a stand, but it's not a very large piece, and it's, it sits right next to our belt press and, and allows us to make that good dry cake like we need to do for land application.
It's kind of a metering system.
It's a metering system, yes. Meter, mixes and meters and make sure we have the right mixture of the water and the polymer. If we get too much water and not enough polymer, we end up with that liquid. And we've been fighting that, and the guys have done a great job at the plant of repairing and rebuilding and putting it back together, and it's just to a point where we can't rebuild it anymore.
All right.
If there are no questions, it's recommended the City Council approve the purchase of the Atris and Model five eighty for ninety-seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. All right, number three.
Honorable councilors, we have a request by KDOT as we proceed with the one eighty-third and Kellogg US five four four hundred geometric improvement. The city, they requested that, since there's been some time, that they get a reaffirmation of the city's commitment to the project, of what you see in your agenda reports, including a history of how we got to where we're at today, including the programming included in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Specifically, what, what we're addressing here is the turn lanes northbound onto Kellogg and the southbound lanes with a right turn straight lane and left turn, all with an integrated signal control system that will be integrated with the R cut that is scheduled to, to go to bed late of the summer. The analysis is, again, they've asked the city just to reaffirm its commitment. The project's included in the twenty twenty-two capital improvement program and will be allocated to ninety-six eighty eighty-four ten. It's that recommendation that by voice vote, you reaffirm our commitment to the one maybe very geometric improvement.
They aren't asking for a bigger contribution, are they?
Not at this time. It's.
And if you want, if you'd like to know the numbers, just briefly, we've essentially got an engineer's estimate from, from Trans Systems of eight hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. Their, in addition to that, their design is eighty-seven thousand. We don't have a, a fixed proposal yet for the construction phase services, but that we've estimated another hundred thousand. Total project estimated cost is a million ninety-three, million ninety-three thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars. We think the city, what we've requested from the state is eight hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars, and then the local responsibility on this application is two hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So I think that's, if, if the math and if they accept our numbers and our estimates, that's what the city is agreeing to be responsible for on the project, is two hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
And we've already committed to the design costs with Trans Systems, so we're already paying that.
I mean, it's a pretty good deal. I mean, when we're contributing two hundred thousand to a million-dollar project, that KDOT is contributing to. Yeah, I'll make a motion to, for the H three recommendation.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Move on to H four.
This is item H four, honorable councilors. An ordinance contains certain requirements for fireworks stands. So a quick background, a certain firework distributor asked if the city, if selling fireworks should be prohibited on church parking lots and other institutional locations. So, out of view of City Code, Chapter Seven, Article Three, identified that fireworks stands can only be located in lots or zoned for retail sales. Additionally, has been determined that only six stands can be located in the city reducing the possible sales tax that could be collected during the fireworks sale season. It's also determined that all applicants must be sponsored by a nonprofit organization that resides in the ceiling of Goddard. Being sponsored by a nonprofit, these fireworks stands are being exempt from paying sales taxes, such as sales taxes westfield collected. Removing this requirement allows other fireworks stands to set up shop in Goddard without any additional requirements, further increasing sales tax revenue generated. So we're talking about three different items here. We're talking about being funded by a non, or being sponsored by a nonprofit for fireworks stands, the amount of fireworks stands that are in Goddard and the location of fireworks stands. So those are the three underlying items that we're talking about here. Governing body, of course, at your discretion, can decide to not have changed anything, can change all of it, can change other, they can change different parts at your leisure, so well within your purview. City council is reviewing City of Goddard Code seven dash three oh five point B, and B says, "No permit shop be issued for any location where its retail sales are not permitted on the zoning laws." Green is what I've added. I've added exception B, I, exceptions to this shall be social institutions which have adequate parking space available to host fireworks stands. Such social institutions can be, but are not limited to schools, places of worship, colleges and nonprofit organizations. So the code under seven dash three oh five says that there has to be a minimum of ten off-street parking locations. Certain churches like Pathway, like Holy Spirit, and different, different tag church, for example, Assembly of Goddard, have more than ten parking spots in their off-street, which would be able to accommodate that parking requirement. But there's owned, there's, some of them are zoned for commercial, but their, the land use is, is a social institution land use, which doesn't allow for retail sales, and so this would allow them to be able to sell fireworks if, if it was a social institution. So it still doesn't allow anybody to sell it out of the backyard or the front yard or anything of that nature. Number two is additionally has been determined controlling for inconvenience. So black means it's stayed the same. I haven't changed anything here. Dangerous, interference with pedestrian vehicle or traffic danger to the public at up to six, so I crossed out six and I added fifteen. Establishments or premises may be located in areas of City of Goddard where retail sales are permitted, retail sales in this particular case, except for exceptions, so that would still be allowed. And I just changed it from six to fifteen. Applications, so the blacks hasn't been changed. Applications for permits to sell fireworks shall not be accepted before the first business date of January, and I'll skip ahead. Therefore, applications will be accepted on the first come, first served basis for any of the, crossed out six, added fifteen. Permits that remain unissued, all applications shall, and I crossed out have sponsored by a nonprofit organization from within the City of Goddard and being submitted in a form as determined by the City clerk of the City of Goddard, and then I crossed out each nonprofit organization due under one location, the ceiling of the City of Goddard. So once again, what we're saying is that certain areas, typically you're saying if it's a commercial lot like a Walmart or something that sells as retail sales, they typically would allow fireworks stands, but we're saying that if you're an institution and you have ten or more parking spaces, you can also post a fireworks stand. It's also saying that instead of just limiting it to six first come, first served, we're saying fifteen first, first come, first served. And instead of saying that each stand has to be sponsored by a nonprofit, anybody's welcome to come and participate in the sale of fireworks within City of Goddard, up to fifteen stands. Now, as mentioned, governing body can change none of this, change some of it, or table it, whatever you wish. This is just a recommendation, and if so, we would just take into advisement whatever you want to do to move forward on that. Financially, a small publication cost for the ordinance, legally approved as the form. If you wanted to, the ordinance is, of course, included in the attachment, but you would waive the reading of the ordinance with the motion, and then you approve the ordinance outlined in exhibit H point four A with the motion and then followed by a roll call.
They've still got the setbacks away from buildings and so on with the tents active area.
Yeah, so that's all, that's per fire code, so that's not being changed. We wouldn't actually be, legally, I don't think we'd actually be able to change that requirement, but all, all fireworks stands don't have to abide by the setback requirement. We're not changing any of that.
Do, with the six limit, do we normally turn people away who want to set up a fireworks stand?
That's a Terry Lamond question.
No. Okay. I guess my concern would be opening it up, like I know the Lions Club and Holy Spirit, you know, they require, they rely on the stands to help raise funds for their items, so I don't want it to hurt their fundraising.
If we had a limit, I'd know how many stands the city would take. Six, as per population.
Not per population, it's just the code says six total for the city. And so we, and this provision, it would just simply increase to fifteen, or if you don't want to increase at all, at your leisure, whatever you prefer.
But I mean, if we don't have, I don't know, it's like, if we open up where they can put them, is that going to increase people wanting to come have stands here to where it could offset the funds that those nonprofit organizations are making? So I don't, like I said, I don't want to hinder their profit, their fundraising, but I like the tax dollars, so.
I can simply say that I was in when this, when this originally came into fruition. And originally, we started out that it was going to be by population as to how many stands we could do. And we started out with, I think, five, then we increased it to six as the city grew, just so that they would not push anybody out that's making, depending on that for fundraising and that whoever had it the year before had first dibs at it. I don't know if that's still the case or if that's been changed since then.
I believe that's the case, is that right, Terry? That if you had a permit last year, it puts you in the queue at the front for the next year.
So you got you on March first for all the previous stands to reapply, so.
So that's not changing. They would still be able to be at the front of the line if they had applied previously.
I can, I can simply say that, I know that having done some work up in Mays with the Lions Club up there, that they changed it a lot more, and it hurt a lot of the people over there.
I, I do think that the big one that's by the bank, I believe that is, Holy Spirit does it and they sponsor it, and it's with another church, so that one I could almost see just moving to the Holy Spirit parking lot, which would kind of alleviate that.
Yeah, that was actually one of them. So they were sponsored by Knights of Columbus, and they wanted, they were losing their location at the bank, and so they wanted to know if they could relocate to the Holy Spirit, but Holy Spirit is not zoned for retail sales. So we said, well, we can consider that as, as part of the ordinance if you want to allow for fireworks stands to be on social institutions if they have ten off-street parking locations, and of course, we own setbacks per fire code. But then reviewing the code, we also saw that it was limited to six, so we didn't know if.
If we wanted to change it.
It would be more equitable to allow more people, because I think that, I'm not a hundred percent sure how Wichita deals with fireworks stands, but it would allow for more individuals who wanted to sell fireworks in Goddard could sell fireworks up to fifteen, or, you know, if you didn't want to do that, you could retract it. Also, the removing of the requirement for it to be attached to a nonprofit within the city limits of Goddard will allow more people to come to Goddard to sell fireworks, but if you wanted them to still have that stipulation, of course, well within the purview, whatever you decide about.
When's the last time the number was updated?
Sorry, say it again?
When's the last time that went from like five to six?
Oh, I have no idea.
Free two thousand and eight.
Oh, so it's been a minute.
I mean, you could, you could increase it to six or seven, but I don't know, does that want to allow fifteen in here, because it would be a zoo.
I almost like keeping, saying they can go on churches and other places like that, but keeping it tied to a nonprofit.
Okay.
Because then those, or they're still getting their benefit. They're not gonna lose.
What about the limit? Do you want to increase it from six to a different number, or you want to keep it at six? This is sort of like a buffet. You guys can pick and choose however you want.
Ten.
You're gonna.
I think with it being tied to the nonprofit, though, that might help not, you know, with the ten.
Well, if it's tied to the church, the church isn't gonna.
It just depends on, if you increase that number, then you're spreading out the money that those nonprofits are making. And so, I know they did that in Mays, and two or three of the nonprofits couldn't compete, because then the big fireworks companies came in and they picked the nonprofits that would do it the cheapest. And so you, you, you lost out on your nonprofits, because they were, they were shopping for nonprofits to apply for a, for a permit.
Wow.
And so that's a sort of a slippery slope on that.
But it's been, you know, fourteen years since we added another stand.
You know, I would have a problem with increasing it to seven or eight, but I don't know, does that want to fit in?
I mean, eight's a thirty-three percent increase, so, still a good jump.
I'm gonna propose eight, allowed at all the new locations, but still tied to nonprofit.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, if I have the consensus.
So you're, so what you're saying is, let's just change that fifteen number to eight and the rest is good?
No, opening up where they can be. So like, they can be in the church parking lot, they can, where they couldn't before.
But they'd still be tied to a nonprofit.
But they still have to be tied to a nonprofit.
Perfect. Second.
Motion to second? Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close.
So we would have a, you would want to first, we would do a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance, and it would be amended as discussed. So you would waive the reading of the ordinance and then approve the ordinance as discussed with the motion and followed by a roll call.
Okay, I make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Say motion to second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close.
And then you would approve the ordinance outlined in exhibit H point four A with amendments as discussed.
Approve the ordinance outlined in exhibit H dot four A as I changed them.
Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Followed by a roll call. Any discussion?
Councilmember Leland.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor.
Yes.
And it would be ordinance eight eight seven.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is item page point five, design guidelines amended. Quick background, so as the city grows, more businesses are being attracted to the residential boom that has been experienced as I see new potential clients in the burgeoning market. All new commercial buildings typically require a site plan which outlines what the architectural style of building is, as well as the building material. As construction costs, excuse me, increase such, some property owners are designing to build rolled metal buildings on commercial lots for the principal building or for an accessory building. Design restrictions do not restrict these type of structures, and some of the buildings have been allowed to be built with rolled metal. They do, however, require a metal face to be clad with something else like stucco, stone, brick, but the building frame is allowed to be rolled metal. On May tenth, twenty twenty-one, the planning commission and the governing body discussed On May 10th, 2021, the planning commission and the governing body discussed, excuse me, the design standards in detail, the community development director, me, myself, created a draft ordinance reflecting these comments, which is being presented today. On June 14th, the planning commission approved the new design standards. This is a quick analysis, so the current regulations found in Article 11, 108.4C, and metal structures either for storage, use, or business usage of a square footage greater than 200 square feet shall not have side space and no cladding. Facing materials to these structures shall be stone, brick, stuff, or other建筑材料. And then 104B applicability is for site plans, and all private and public principal land uses shall submit site plans and other required drawings for approval by the planning officials of single-family duplex unless a ladder arrangement in courtyard or group setting. Building design standards have been amended in the form of draft as attached below exhibit 2.2A, which actually should be H.5A. Green letter shows the text included, red letter in the strike, blue shows the text to be removed. 108.4B, oh, four, 108.4 building design. So you've probably seen some of this before, this is back in 2021, when we had a group session through the planning commission and city council, and we outlined sort of the pros and cons of becoming more relaxed in terms of design standards. And so the planning commission, after review, allowed for the new draft that's being presented today before the city councils. And basically what it changes it to is this, where if you have a building that's facing a street, if it's significantly exposed to the pub, well, first of, it's, A, building A, if it's facing the street, would be faced with, clad with something else besides rolled metal. Once you see that the sides are not clad with something else, it would just be the facade. And then this building B, even if it's a secondary building or an accessory building, essentially not significantly exposed to the street it is facing, it's not required to be faced with something different. And these empty lots don't require these siding to have a different type of material besides rolled metal. Once B is fifty percent exposed or more significantly exposed to the street that it's facing, it's required to be faced with something else in the facade, even if it is an accessory building. Now we have buildings A, B, C, and D. You can see building C, since it's on a corner lot, it's abutting two streets, it's required to have those facings on both sides, but not on the west side and on the north side, the south side and the east side. D, once again, is just facing one street, so it's just going to be faced with a different facade on that side. From this visual example here, you can see that this building has a different facade. The building behind it, it's not significantly exposed, you can see around it, but it's not, the majority of it's not exposed, so it's not required to have them facing. As soon as it becomes significantly exposed, it has to have a different type of facing. Once again, this is not considered significantly exposed, it should be facing, but as soon as it reaches a certain height, it's considered significantly exposed, and it's required to have it facing. Small publication cost per state law legally approved as the form, and is recommended the governing body waive the reading of the ordinance, approve the changes to design guidelines and regulations outlining exhibit H.5A with the motion and a roll call. And questions, comments, all received on this time.
Do we have any questions?
It's not, it's not retroactive, is it?
Retroactive? No, once it's approved, anything that's already existing now is grandfathered in, just like any other previous code, code for that, or code after that, so.
I make a motion that we waive the reading.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried.
We would take a motion to approve the changes to design guideline regulations outlining exhibit H.5A, motion and followed by roll call.
One motion for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Leland.
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor.
Yes.
Be ordinance 888.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Honorable governing body, the resolution, what you'll have are six resolutions, all establishing the authority to issue special assessments for the improvements for Trails End Phase One and the primary water supply line that the city has agreed to participate in the oversizing of, not a direct contribution, but very similar things to what we did for Elk Ridge, so that we would have the ability of the autonomy down the road to increase service provisions off of those lines as our community continues to grow. Item H.6A is a resolution authorizing the water main improvements. We had a request initially on October 18th to finance a lift station. Staff was directed to come up with options to contribute $100,000 to the oversize of the water main to accommodate future growth. At the November meeting, the council selected general fund discretionary capital outlay transfer as the financing mechanism for that. December 20th, 2021, ordinance 880 and 881 were adopted, which amended the single-family residential to R2, two-family residential housing, and also brought the petitioner into the city of Goddard via annexation. On April 4th, you approved the engineering services agreement with Garber in the amount of $638,600, and at the May 2nd meeting, the Trails End plat was approved. The specific parcel that we're talking about in question here is the parcel in purple. Thank you, Micah, for the map. We have 23rd to the south, 215th to the west, with Walnut being the nearest cross street. And you can see the school complex with Clark Davidson and the intermediate school as well. This is the northern half of Trails End, and then the southern half, which is where Phase One will be restricted to. The resolution and its developer petition request, 399,000 plus a 1% per month from April 1st to construct the water transmission line. The city at large is contributing $100,000 for the construction and installation of the oversize, and this is referenced again in the November 15th, 2021 meeting minutes, and the documents have been reviewed by the city attorney, city administrator, and city engineer. The financial considerations are that this is a petition improvement for development, just like we've done in all of our subdivisions that have occurred throughout Goddard's growth period, which means that the temporary notes that will be issued subsequent to the improvement petition will then be rolled or converted into long-term special assessment, general obligation bonds. The proposed documents have been reviewed by, I'm sorry, authored by bond counsel Kevin Cowan, and reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck, who approves this to form. Are there any questions over the water line improvement? If not, it's staff's recommendation to accept the petition and approve the resolution as presented by a voice vote.
I'd motion to accept the petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Both.
The next item authorizes the water distribution improvement, so essentially you have your larger main, which carries the water into the subdivision, and what the water distribution improvement does is essentially sends it down the streets and into the homes and down Again, a review of the background with the maps. They're requesting 987,000 with a 1% per month inflator. That will be a portion on one and 145th total assessment, which is the portion of the lots impacted. This cost is borne entirely by the benefit district, making the petition, the city at large is not contributing to the improvement, and the documents have been reviewed by the city attorney, city engineer, and city administrator. Again, this, these will be converted and rolled in accordance with the special assessment statute, KSA 12-6A01 et cetera, authored by our bond attorney and reviewed by our city attorney who approves this to form. If there are no questions on the water distribution, it's staff's recommendation to accept the petition and approve the resolution.
I make a motion to accept the petition.
And approve the resolution?
And approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried.
And that will be resolution 2210, and the prior one was 2209 for the water transmission.
Item H.6C authorizes a sanitary sewer lift station and forced main improvement. This is a request for 786,000 plus 1% per month inflator, a portioned one, 202nd total cost of the assessment, 100% borne by the benefit district, 0% or the city at large is not contributing. Again, the documents have been reviewed by your city attorney, city engineer, and city administrator. Again, converted and rolled in accordance with the special assessment statute authored by our bond counsel and reviewed and approved by the city attorney as to form.
Can we have a motion to accept the petition and approve the resolution?
I'll, I'll motion to accept the petition and approve the resolution.
Or second.
Motion second, any discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried.
And that'll be resolution 2211, or, excuse me, 22, yes, 2211, that's correct.
And this is, item H.6D is the sanitary sewer improvement for the noted lots, and what this is, is essentially the sewer mains that are going to the lift station before it's pumped down the force main and into the sanitary sewer larger collection system. More background, that's unchanged from the previous items. The request and authorizations for 878,000 plus a 1% per month inflator from April 1st. This one's a portioned one, 155th of the total cost. The cost of the improvement is borne entirely 100% by the benefit district, with the city at large not contributing to this improvement. Again, the documents have been reviewed by your attorney, engineer, and administrator. These also will be rolled or converted in accordance with the special assessment statute, and if there are no questions, it's to accept the petition and approve the resolution as
Do we have a motion to accept the petition and approve the resolution?
Why is that one only one, 155th?
Because of how the lots are assessed, because again, it's just simply taking essentially where your sewer cleanout is from your house, taking that into the main, so...
But, yeah, I think it is a different number than the other ones.
Yeah, the others were 202.
Right. But the number of homes.
Because some will be...
Is less.
I think it's probably because of the manholes, isn't it, Harland, with multiple...
And I have the number in my staff report that I didn't include here, includes the actual number of...
Is it because there are duplexes?
That might be.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion.
I know they're phasing the development, so maybe this is just the first portion of the phase, and the lift station will serve other areas, and so it will, then can spread that cost to other lots.
Across, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All favor eye.
Aye.
Both. Carry.
Resolution 22-12.
E is the paving improvements for lots 23 through 93, block one, plus 1 through 66, block two, and lots 1 through 8, block three. They're requesting 1,853,000 plus 1% per month, and this one's a portioned two, 370th.
So one, 185th, okay.
Pretty good amount.
Are there any questions?
It's 185. I'll make a motion to accept the petition and approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All favor eye.
Resolution 22-13.
Stormwater drainage improvements. Okay. 1.433 million, so 1,433,000, portioned two, 370th. And the cost of the improvement is borne 100% by the benefit district, just like all the others, with the exception of the first one. Are there any questions? I don't know why they're portioning this way.
I think there's, I think there's 370 lots in the whole development, and so all the drainage gets assessed to all the lots, but the first phase is just the 155 that we talked about. So that's probably why the difference. We kind of rely on them to figure those, how those things are spread, because they're...
I'm just wondering why it wasn't reduced, the 2, 370th to 1, 155th, but that's just my math nerd, it's my...
Must be, must be some engineer thinking figuring this out or something.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept the petition and approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All favor eye.
Aye.
Summer Ball Showdown, we have representatives from the baseball tournament that is at the Genesis Sports Complex here this evening to make a request. They made a request via email on September 28th. The initial request was on March 31st with a subsequent request and an additional amount on the 28th. There's a breakdown there. You have the flyer as well in front of you that was emailed on Friday. The total ask is 15,000, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dave.
No problem. Hello, council, my name is Sheldon Hall, actually, I'm the president of the Summer Ball Showdown, so first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you for having us out and letting us speak with you guys this evening. Just wanted to kind of give a little update on the Summer Ball Showdown, if you haven't heard of it before or prior, just so everybody is kind of up to speed on it. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we are a national baseball tournament for collegiate and semi-professional baseball, so we are bringing in teams from all over the country to come here to Goddard to play baseball as a postseason tournament at the end of collegiate summer ball. So with that, we are looking or expecting, or trying, I should say, to get close to 32 teams this summer. Last year, we had 14 teams from a regional area, and we've been able to expand out from there. Last year, we had teams come from California, Texas, Nebraska, so from different teams coming into play. This year, we've already grown, I think we're sitting between 18 and 20 teams that are paid and confirmed to come this year, and then we're hoping to grow that up to the teams we're talking to, to 32. So we're in the process of building and growing, and we're super excited about some of the things we have going on. One thing that we did last year that I'd like to highlight, with us being a nonprofit, we partnered with the USA Military War Dogs. They're obviously a military team that plays baseball. With them, we partnered with Mut 22 to give away a active military female Marine, a service dog at the Summer Ball Showdown. So it was a really cool and awesome procession that we had with her, able to get her a dog on the field. And with that, we're partnering with them again this year. The charity that they've chosen to partner with this year is the Hope for the Warriors, so we'll be working with them. And then also, I don't know if you guys have this here, but we have some of the other ones that we're working with as well, in collaboration with our nonprofits, with Big Brothers Big Sisters, Meaningful Life Foundation, Wichita Little is Heroes. So we're trying to expand that community reach and being able to help other nonprofits in our area, and giving back to them, and in providing them a platform where they can reach more people out at the baseball field, and giving them something fun to be able to do. With that, we had proposed a couple of different ideas, and to be honest, what we wanted to do is just kind of have some open discussion with you guys as the city, because we're looking to collaborate with you, and we want to partner with you guys and be able to bring something exciting to the Goddard community, something for the youth community, and try to do something that we can give back. So this year, we're going... So this year, we're going to try and organize with the rec department here, and also other baseball teams just around here, and softball teams too, I should say, about doing a youth camp with the War Dogs, where they will come on. They have kind of a format that they run at their camps that they do, and we would love to collaborate with you guys in being able to offer every rec baseball and softball player an option, being able to go to that, which is a part of some of the ask that we have inside of here. But there's, there's other things as well. The camp is a big one that I hold kind of close to me, but we also have in there about an opening day, offering a ticket to all of the Goddard community to be able to come out, possibly getting involved with a fireworks show, and doing something awesome for the community there, and trying to make it something that is a staple of this community every single summer all the time. We have an agreement with Genesis Sports Complex, so we will be renting the facility again this year, and we are hoping that that partnership can continue to grow, and they'll allow us to stay involved with them there, because it's an amazing facility. It allows us to offer a very, I shouldn't say low-expense tournament, but lower than a lot of other national tournaments that are across the nation, which is why we have gained so much interest in just one year of being able to put this on. And I do think that it will continue to grow year to year, just because travel expenses, gas, that type of stuff is obviously going up. So we're trying to do what we can do for, for baseball teams out there, for these guys that are trying to go and, and be able to continue their craft, continue to play, and try to have something to play for, so we're trying to offer that. And then we want to be able to highlight the city of Goddard and show what we have going on here as well, too. So, so yeah, so that's kind of into it. I won't go into every little detail of what we have on there. Hopefully you guys are able to see that, see some of the teams and our partnerships, and we're looking to get involved with the community as much as possible. The more people from the community that we can have come out there, it just allows us to help the organizations that we're involved with, and being a part of how the community is growing. So with that, I would open it up, if you guys have any questions or anything that you would like to discuss, we would love to be able to answer and talk about some of the future plans and what we might be trying to do.
Why is it the same weekend as NBC?
That's basically because college baseball, that's when it allot's for all the teams to be able to travel. If you do it too much earlier than that, you won't get anybody to travel, and if you do it too much later, everybody goes back to college. So we have an open-style tournament, so we do have a little bit of, you know, some of the guys that are outside of college, they're, you know, ex-professional players, that type of stuff. So we have some of them that they could care less when the date is, but the vast, I would say 90% of the teams that we talked to, you got a real small window to make it work, which is another massive draw for GSC, is the fact that it's all turf facility, you don't have to worry about rain delays. I mean, if it does rain, I mean, we can get right back on there and get it done. And the fact that we can play with this many teams in five days, it's just, it's growing in that sense, because people see that in comparison to other options that are across the nation, being able to play. So, yep.
So basically, what is this fund going to be used to, to help generate? What is it going to, what is our money's going to?
Right, so we kind of laid out a couple of different options for involvement that were inside of there. Honestly, openly, we would just like to do what you guys see the best fit for the people at the end of the day. My biggest, what I think makes the most sense to me personally, which could agree or not agree, but I like the idea of trying to get the youth baseball and softball community involved with our tournament. I think that if we can grow the game of baseball from a youth perspective, it helps the entirety of the sport across the board. So, and I've visited with, you know, the guys that play here in town, and trying to get them excited and involved, and I think they would love it. I think that we would have a relatively high percentage of those athletes that would come out and take advantage of it. And I also put in here that we would, we wouldn't ask for all of that, like, we would split half of that with the city as well, too. So that way, it was kind of a half and half deal, and just trying to create a good partnership for the youth community. So that, you know, and that's just one of them on there. We've also, we've laid out other things. I think obviously doing a community night, where we're talking about, you know, the city of Goddard, and we could get creative with different ways to get those tickets to the community, and, you know, anybody in the community to come out to opening night completely for free, right? And we get those tickets out and all over the place. I mean, we're, we're an open book in that sense. We want it to be community-driven, and we want the community to be as involved as possible, but, you know, fireworks shows aren't free at the end of the day. So, you know, we got to find ways to be able to draw them in as well, too. And, you know, that's just kind of some of the ideas that we've thrown out there anyway. And then if there's any other, you know, types of organizations, or city branches, or things that we would like to have out there, we're open book. I mean, we would love to have them out there and have them involved with us one way or another, and so that way, we can find ways to give back to them as well, right? I mean, that's the ultimate goal of how we've designed this entire tournament, is to give back to 501(c)(3)'s, give back to nonprofits, and find ways where they can do something as an annual event. For example, I guess, like Big Brothers and Big Sisters, we're working with them, and I think this will be another one that's going to be a big event for the youth community, is they're going to put on a wiffleball tournament. So while our baseball tournament is going on, we have one field that's too small for us to use, and the Big Brothers Big Sisters is going to have a wiffleball tournament going on there. So inviting all of the youth community to come out, put a team in, be able to play inside of that. One of our ones that we actually just finalized not too long ago is we're going to do a home run derby with Chick-fil-A. So Chick-fil-A is going to be involved, which I know that they're involved with just about everything nowadays, but they're going to come out, we're going to have a big home run derby out there, and it's an open thing, like, it's not like you would see on TV, I guess, like, it's a public one. So anybody can come, anybody can come and hit, right? And we want to try and just have as much involvement, and ultimately, hopefully, we have a lot of fun with the kids as well, so.
Everybody having any questions, or?
So you didn't, we didn't contribute to this last year, did we? How, how'd it go last year without the city participating?
Is financially, or how did the baseball side go? Because those are two of the figures.
Yeah, I mean, did, did you need money to make it work last year?
It would have been helpful, for sure, yeah. I mean, we lost money last year, if I'm being open and honest, about 20 is what we lost. But the reality is, is, you know, we knew going into it, building a baseball tournament from the ground up, I mean, it's like any business, it's going to take a little bit of that initial, and you have to build it, right? So only having 14 teams last year was, we didn't know where we would be, right? It was just kind of a, we knew the concept was there, because we got a ton of feedback and we pumped it out there, but that takes time. Baseball's an old sport, right? I'm one of the youngest, if not the youngest missionaries and owners that is in the collegiate space, and so dealing with a lot of the older guys, it takes time to win them over sometimes, so they build that trust with you. And, and I appreciate that, and I try to show that by what we do. So we were, you know, we're on the right track in the sense of how we're trying to grow it, it just, we know that it takes time in the process, so.
And I guess the other question I have is, so I mean, it looks like, even if we put money to it, from a city standpoint, even if we did, people still got to pay to go, and.
Yeah, so in that, on the opening night, basically, that's kind of where we had put in there. If the city was to essentially purchase those tickets, then we'd be able to offer those tickets to the public, essentially however we would like to distribute them. And we could make that number, really whatever you guys, type of involvement you wanted to do. Again, these are just kind of the starting ideas, I would say, to where we can try and build that to the number that you would like it to be at, whether it's bigger, smaller, however you would want to put it.
Isn't this pretty much between the other event, community events we do? I mean, what's this in comparison to that? How much do we spend? Angie, how much do we send the chamber?
We get $6,000 per event.
Per event?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a pretty big ask, from what I know, from.
Did we want, did we want to table this until we do our budget, or what do we want to do?
What is our budget, really?
We will begin, we've already, I've already started working on budget. I mean, we have to adopt with, under the new rules by, I want to say it's the last week of August, but there is, I mean, we have, if you wanted to do this, we have funds to do, if you wanted to sponsor this event.
Okay. And to interject there, it doesn't have to be all of it. At the end of the day, we just want to see what you guys would see as beneficiary to what you would like to grow, and we would like to show you that it's going to help, and like to grow with you guys, I guess, at the end of the day. You know, these ideas that we have, that we've written out over here, are just big-picture things, and we know year to year it's going to continue. So we're just trying to see what makes the most sense for your guys' involvement, and what you guys can be passionate about, in the sense for the community, whether that be from the youth side or general populace side, just whatever makes sense.
Would the War Dogs mini camp be during the day?
Yes, so that'll be on a weekend, so depending on, there's a couple of variables we don't know yet, obviously. So depending on how many kids and how that would break out, we would break that up, essentially, so that way it's not all the kids at one time, and it's not as beneficial. The good thing is, is they're bringing more guys this year, because they had a blast last year, so they'll have more military guys with us this year, so we'll be able to section them out across multiple fields. And again, that will be open to softball as well, too, and we'll kind of have a format for that, but it'll all just depend on the overall numbers at the end of the day.
Do you know how many you had sign up for that camp last year?
We didn't really do it last year. So last year, we started to, but then, in the midst of everything kind of going, we never really got it off the ground. And honestly, that was probably more so our fault than anything, just because it just wasn't on the top end of our perspective, more so we were trying to find our teams to come and play, so, just being honest.
And I guess one other question I had, is, because I remember last year, there was a lot of businesses through the chamber doing tickets, like, I don't know, somehow like 500 tickets apiece to give away, or.
Right, so.
Wouldn't, wouldn't this cut into that?
So we did, our format of how we did things last year is something we're not doing anything this year. So it's, we've kind of gone away from that idea. So we had a different individual that was with us, and our kind of mindset last year was to get that involvement, to try and kind of paint the town with as many things that were out there that would be considered like a, a free thing from multiple different facets. And honestly, what we found was, is that just convoluted the entire thing. It just made everybody a little bit more confused, and it, nobody really understood what was going on. So, and there's all kinds of partial blame across that entire spectrum, but for us, you know, what we want to do is have one avenue, one thing, and just make it clear communication so that it's pumped out amongst everybody, and it's, there's no confusion at the end of the day. So we're trying to clean that side of it up at the end of it. Like, we want to make it to where it's access to everybody, everybody sees it, everybody knows it, and then it's smooth sailing from there.
So it's just 10 bucks a ticket in this year?
Yes, sir. Yep, yeah, that's the general admission, yeah.
On a side note, before you, like, publish any, this is going to happen this night, I'm going to probably vote that the fireworks happen on Friday or Saturday.
Yeah.
Because people already get grumpy when the fireworks go off.
Yeah.
Especially on a weeknight.
Gotcha.
So our approval for that, probably, we got yelled at about that last year.
Gotcha. Yeah, and the Friday day is going to be the military celebration night, so it kind of goes hand in hand for that anyway, so, that's the War Dogs night anyway.
So what's the next in this wish? Do you have to make a decision now, or do you want to table it and discuss it? Or what do you want to do?
When do you have to know this, by?
Whenever it works for you, at the end of the day.
Can we table this to the last, to the next meeting?
100%, we, and like I said, we would love to have the open discussion with you guys. I mean, I want to find what makes the most sense for you, and what makes sense for the city. And, and ultimately, that's, that's our goal, that's what we want to try and figure out, and whatever you guys see fit at the end of the day, we can take that and make it as best as we can make it for this year, and then go from there. Yep. I mean, Mike.
It's just Mike. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. We're going to make a motion to table this to the next meeting?
Second.
Motion second to table it. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our board council, we have the Starbarn progress, which you can see with the second phase of the fields underway. So the turf has been laid in three of the five, and you can see the walkways, which still needs a concrete cord. Arbor Creek, you can see the homes looking back straight left with Amelia Earhart in the upper right-hand corner. View of the HOA pool and clubhouse. Elk Ridge continues to complete its build-out, and you can see Cloverleaf with Phase 2 starting to be rounded out here, and as you know, you can see where some of the preliminary work for Phase 3 is, is beginning to be underway. And Rusty Creek, you can see that two spec homes are currently early in their foundational Items that we have coming up in June, the budget and CIP, some municipal code cleanup, linear park shade structures, discussing sign regulations, and Angie from the chamber will give us an after-action review on Neighbor United 2022. That concludes my report. If there are any questions, consult your staff. Thank you.
All right, I guess we're, it's time for governing body comments.
I got nothing.
What do you got, of course, Mike?
Yeah, um, yeah, I think I look forward to just how we can keep growing as a community and things forward.
Have a good night. Hope everybody drives safe.
Much to thank everybody for coming out, being part of our meeting, and look forward to serving the community and making Goddard a better place to live. With that being said, I take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.